I am going to call the meeting to order at this time. It is seven o'clock on December the third, two thousand and eighteen. The Select Board for the Town of Concord. We are being recorded and broadcast by Minuteman Media Network. So when you address the board, please speak up. So all to hear and identify yourself and your place of residence. We will begin with the consent agenda. The town accounted warrants, minutes for October the first, October tenth, and October fifteenth. Silent fund holiday gifts, proclamation for Nikki Songus. And we have it here. Mike Lawson is going to be delivering it on behalf of the Select Board at a function that is going to be honoring Representative Songus, who will be retiring this year in January to be replaced by Lori Trehan. So.
Who would like that?
I think you don't pass not read it tonight. Mike will read that. We have one day special licenses. Concord Youth Theater, January fifth of two thousand and nineteen, seven P.M. to eleven P.M., fifty-one Walden Street, wine only. Psychomedics Corporation, December eighteenth, six P.M. to nine P.M., forty Westford Road, Wine and Malt. An extension of hours. The Salt Clarks Kitchen, December nineteenth, nine-thirty, last call at nine P.M. Woods Table, January first, New Year's Day, two thousand and nineteen, one-thirty A.M. last call, twelve-thirty A.M. And eighty Thoreau, also New Year's, is going to be at one A.M. last call at twelve-thirty A.M. And January twenty-seventh of two thousand and nineteen, eleven A.M. I think that may be last call at three P.M. So I will entertain a motion.
Would you approve the agenda?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Town manager report.
Mr. Chair, the planning department received word that the town comprehensive long-range plan entitled "In Vision Concord: The Bridge to Twenty-Thirty" has been chosen to receive a comprehensive planning award from Massachusetts Chapter, the American Planning Association. And the event will be, the plan will be honored on December fourteenth at Tufts University. So hats off to co-chairs Elise Woodward and Gary Kleiman and Civic Motte, the consultant for a job well done on our long-range plan. M.A.P.C., the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, will hold a breakfast meeting this week, Thursday, to do long-range planning for the Boston area. So it's Metro Common twenty-fifty Greater Boston Regional Plan is under discussion starting this Thursday at nine o'clock to eleven o'clock at the Mill at twenty Sudbury Road in Maynard. Cafe Nero is now open, so that part of Main Street is, they can store on Main Street, is now occupied. The tree lighting festivities last night went very well. Police chief estimated between twenty-five hundred and three thousand people there despite the damp weather and the football game that was on at the same time.
That was a great event.
That's nice to know, a lot of fun. You see, two paving projects that had been delayed by the snowstorm have now been completed on Independence Road now caught. That's binder courses just down for the winter, and then in the spring it will be resurfaced. That's a normal strategy. And then the Mass Highway project at Commonwealth Avenue and Main Street, that intersection has been resurfaced and partially striped. So two things that we wanted to get done have been completed. Pumpetacit parking, public courts reports that the first section, the four spaces, westernmost spaces have been completed. There's three spaces where more work will be done this week, and hopefully they'll get some warm weather to complete that one. And lastly, building commissioner Lori Laveley has announced her plans to resign and take a position elsewhere. She'll be leaving on December twenty-sixth. She's been with us for twelve years total, but just two years since John Minty left as building commissioner.
Thank you. Follow-up to our November fifth Select Board meeting, where Pat Huckley from the State Division of Fisheries and Wildlife came and heard the concern from the homeowners on Wright Road regarding hunters on MCI land, flooding the Gero land. As a result of that hearing, seven safety zone signs have been installed at a distance that seems to be about five hundred feet from the Wright Road property, which will, we hope, prevent hunters from inadvertently hunting too close to the homes. I appreciate the cooperation of Greg McCann at MCI Concord and the prompt action of Ms. Huckley. On Saturday, we voted to open the two thousand and nineteen annual town meeting warrant. Item fourteen of tonight's agenda will recap the preview meeting. Will be, there will be bylaw, we expect amendment concerning town archives, budget guidelines, affordable housing funding, and a number of other, excuse me, number of other bylaws changes and proposals. And in a follow-up to our discussion at the last meeting, a letter was sent to the FCC opposing the proposed reduction of PEG funding and supporting the Mass Municipal Association position of opposition to that proposed regulation. Many thanks to Carlin Reed and the PEG Access Advisory Committee for their attention to this matter. And we also sent letters to the Sudbury, Maynard acting boards regarding their proposed developments, asking them to study provide traffic impact, additional emergency public safety resources that will be needed, and that they provide some engineering data to support the discussion of the stormwater management improvements. Those were all actions resulting from previous board meetings. And I just would ask people to please consider completing the green card, volunteering to serve on one of the town's committees. They'll be meeting a wonderful group of fellow citizens and employees of the town, learn a great deal about how the town operates, and help ensure that a lump of government works at its best. So thank you. That would be my comments. We now will move to the public hearing for seven oh seven, which is the change of stock interest. West Concord Liquor Store doing business as Concord Wine and Spirits located at twelve sixteen Main Street.
Would you open the public hearing?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And you would identify yourself, and then just give us a brief overview of why the request.
My name is Josiah. I own West Concord Liquor Store. I've been owning it for thirty-seven years. It's kind of a significant thing. It's been great years, wonderful years, and we're just making some plans for a state plan, you know, just getting ready for the future.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Mark Lonzer. I'm an attorney. I represent West Concord Liquor Store, the applicant. My office is here in Concord, nine Damian Mills Square. It is probably as about as straightforward an application as you get. As Mr. Sia said, we all reached the point in life where we have to realize we're not going to be here forever, and we do what's called an estate plan. Part of the Sia's estate plan, that is, Mr. Sia and his wife, Mary Ann, they co-own and cooperate the business, is to move the stock that comprises the ownership of the corporation from them individually into their revocable trust. That's all that's happening here. They each own fifty percent of the stock, and each is moving their fifty percent from themselves individually into their trusts. Each are trustees for each other. Mary Ann is the primary trustee of her trust. Joe is the primary trustee of his trust. If one goes, typical arrangement, the trust provides, the survivor gets all, and vice versa. Pretty straightforward transaction.
Pretty straightforward. We do have documents showing that the, the necessary documents from the Secretary of State's office, the articles of the organization, and documents from the Department of Revenue and the Unemployment Assistant showing that all is in order. So we're all in favor usually of good estate planning. I don't know if anybody has any questions, or does anybody in the public wish to make any statement? Not hearing any? I guess we are.
Would you move to close the public hearing?
All in favor?
Aye.
They didn't hear us having any comments, right?
Other than to, independent of why you're here before us, which couldn't be simpler, this is a, this is an organization that's made enormous contributions, continuous contribution of everything in this town. We value your investment.
Great to do.
With that.
Yes.
I would move to approve the application for the change of stock interest from West Concord Liquor Store doing business as the Concord Wine and Spirits located at twelve sixteen Main Street. Approval is contingent upon A B C C approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck. We hope you stay another thirty-eight years.
Thank you so much.
We now have the seven-ten public hearing, change of ownership, corporate name and officers, Carney Arrow Restaurant Corp. doing business as Rosini's Pizzeria and Restaurant, to R.K. Wing Corp. doing business as Rosini's Pizzeria and Restaurant located at two oh six Pittsburgh Turnpike.
Would you move to open the public hearing?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Here we go. Yes. Do I sit at table?
Just identify yourself and kind of give us a little background.
Okay, I'm Gilbert Almeida. I currently own Rosini's Pizzeria, and I'm trying to pass Rosini to him. Meanwhile, I'll still be in the director of the Rosinis. I'm working there full-time, she's working full-time.
You just identify yourself other than him.
I'm Raphael, and I'm the new owner of the R.K. Wing Corp., as proposed, to buy Carney Restaurant Corporation, doing business as Rosini's. As I've been working at Rosini's since two thousand and four.
Oh, lovely. Another business, though.
Now, it's good business, so. Anybody have any questions, or do we, anybody in the public want to make a comment? Yes.
I just say that.
If you could step forward and identify yourself, or.
Stand on three-four-sixty Old Bedford Road. I just want to say they make very, very good pizzas. They also deliver, which is even better on a rainy night.
I'm sure they'll keep it up on the new manager. Anybody else?
Well, I would move to approve the application.
I'm going to close.
Oh, we have to close the public hearing. Right, we have to do that first.
Move to close the public hearing?
I just want to.
We talk after disclosure?
I recommend you do it when it's open.
We have a memorandum of the police chief. According to the police chief, the manager of record will not be present on the premises of the restaurant, the required thirty hours in order to be compliant with this.
I'm there forty hours a week, sir. I'm there forty hours a week. I'm not going to production board in the office. I have thirteen cameras around, you know what I mean, that, on the premises, on the dining area, kitchen, pizza area, and basement, and as well as outside.
So you will, we were led to understand that you would not, you would only be on the premises a limited amount of time, a few hours a week. The board has rules that require the manager of record to be on the premises at least thirty hours a week.
I'm there forty hours a week.
So you're committing to being on the premises?
Yes, forty hours. You don't see me in a production because I'm always in the office downstairs. But I have.
If you're on the premises, I think that that's.
As long as you're accessible and in charge, sir.
I would square that statement, but the statement would be up in the police department.
Andrew, do you have any comments on that? This came to our attention late in the day today. The licensing officer had concern, this concern, that you might not only be there occasionally.
I understand. Yes, so what, it came up during their review, what could possibly be is that they may want us to stop by the police department and do periodic checks to make sure that that would be the case. And, you know, you're committing to the amount of time there, and we'll have it on the record here, and that will be the best way to enforce that. And I know that your paperwork to become a manager down the road is dependent upon your citizenship, so that would, once that's clear, that you could become a manager as well, because you'll be there, you know, full-time as well. So that's the options. The police department may just make a few, you know, want to just confirm that you're there.
That's understood?
Yes.
Did I, just one question. Did I also hear you say that you were going to remain as a trustee of the new corporation?
Yeah, I'm the director.
We did get as part of the package, the articles of the organization, a certificate of good standing from the Department of Revenue, clearing from the Department of Unemployment Assistance, certificate of corporate code, and a fire safety inspection, and the asset purchase agreement. So we do have a lot, but it is important in terms of the, at least thirty hours.
The only other option that I'm thinking about it now is that if the board wanted to have another manager that they felt would be there, they could continue the hearing to the seventeenth, and give the applicant enough time to come back, but if they feel that current situation is fine.
I think, I'm satisfied with the commitment, the verbal commitment, that, understanding that there will be at least thirty hours per week. I'm not sure if there's any advantage if delayed, but I don't know what other people say.
No, it sounds like this is cut back in hours if he goes to thirty hours at least.
I mean, I don't, I'm okay with it, but I find that hard to square with what I'm reading from the police chief. Detective Harrison has on many occasions promised to meet about the need for manager of record to meet the requirements for the hours specified, blah, 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 blah. The investigation into Detective Harrison from our business and the parties involved raises concern about the manager of record not being able to satisfy the requirements for the hours specified for the manager of record. And it's a pretty clear, straightforward statement. It's not. I don't have any, I guess I don't have any real concern, even if, even if we wanted to postpone it, we would certainly deal with the notion that you continue to operate your business. But, so I'd be, I'm happy to go ahead and vote in favor of this, but I'd like to circle back with the chief here, to do it. I'll take your words, so not a problem.
I think, I assume that the police will probably do some random.
They do, they do, for all establishments, yes.
It's a page amendment.
Mr. Warren, Raphael, your background, restaurant background?
I started working at Rosini's since two thousand and four. Originally, I'm from Brazil.
So you've been in the business?
In the business since two thousand and four. I always worked with you.
Fourteen years. That's long.
I was making note during conversations with Detective Harrington, he was supportive of Raphael as, you know, would be good leadership there, and he's been there for a long time and knows the operation in and out. So that was, you know, raised, he made that point during our conversation.
If you don't mind, he is there seven days a week.
Yeah, that's what Detective Harrington said when I talked to him, that Raphael was there. Very hands-on.
Okay, if we, I guess we've had the motion and the second, so all in favor? Aye.
Was that to close the hearing, or was that to?
That's to close the hearing. So if we're setting up our discussion, I have a motion. Please. I would move to approve the application for the change of ownership, corporate name, and officers from Carney Restaurant Corporation doing business as Rosini's Pizzeria and Restaurant, to R.K. Wing Corporation doing business as Rosini's Pizzeria and Restaurant located at two oh six Pittsburgh Turnpike. The manager must be engaged in the actual management of the licensed premises as their main occupation, and must be present on the licensed premises for not less than thirty hours per week, and the hours when alcoholic beverages are sold. Approval is contingent upon A B C C approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Good one.
And be sure to be there.
Yeah.
We'd squeeze them over and.
We now move on to item number seven, which is a class-two license, Nano Auto Service Body LLC, EBA, Nano's Auto, located at twelve-eleven Main Street. Good evening. If you would please identify yourself and just give us a little background on the application.
We do auto repair before we try to open a new business, used car, let's say, in this location.
And your residence is, where do you live?
Live in Berlin, the mess.
And my name is Adriana Pooh. I'm a realtor. A realtor, I live and work in Belmont. I'm a family friend, and I'm helping them in my capacity of a friend on as a realtor, just because the application was a little more complicated, and they needed a little extra help. It was a lot of paperwork.
Of course.
Yeah, we did, okay.
And this full range of auto, auto repairs, specializing in?
So it would be only a used car dealership, right? So the repairs, he has the shop in Woburn, and so this would be a separate business, new business. There is a used car auto dealership right now at this address. They are just changing the ownership of the business. The owner is there, he's renting the place, he doesn't want to, you know, deal with it anymore, so it's pretty straightforward.
No, he's taking over the business that's currently.
Correct, correct. Well, you know, granted, with his, the name of his business, right, so he doesn't get the older name of the business, right, the previous one.
And now we've been provided a used car, declares bond, a workman compensation insurance affidavit, and a certificate of liability insurance. All those documents were part of a package that the board has been providing. The automobiles that you'll have for sale, where would they be stored or kept?
Where would, where would you store them? Inside, outside?
No, outside.
There's a limit to.
Yeah.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five cars. He has a before, same thing.
He had it like this, they, they are not changing anything, they're keeping everything.
I remember it coming before us a couple years ago.
Yeah.
Is the car wash property in West Concord adjacent to the fire station? I wonder if Andrew can tell us, was there a limitation on signs? Andrew, did you have the existing license handy? In the past, the board has placed some kind of limitations on the number of signs, so there wouldn't be twenty-five signs on twenty-five cars, but it'd just be handful of signs that people had the message that it's, used cars are for sale, but the establishment wouldn't have an excess of signage.
The only restriction that I'm aware of at this site was just the twenty-five cars, and the building commissioner Lori Laveley signed off on the application, and that was the only thing that she noted. And I went back and looked at the previous couple licenses for this, there wasn't one. You know, each one of these varies case by case, but this one's existing use, and it's in conformance with what's currently there. And the board did approve same location for a different used car dealership about a year ago.
Anybody have any other comments or questions? It's not a public hearing, I guess, so we don't really need to take public comments if there are any, but if there are, I'd be willing to entertain them. Seeing none, I guess we are ready to move.
Okay, I move to approve the application for a class-two license from Nano's Autobots Auto Service Body LLC doing business as Nano's Auto, located at twelve-eleven Main Street, the phone number of vehicle Chevy, twenty-five.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to, I want to say you have a beautiful downtown. It's, it's a huge colleague, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We are now ready to receive the dog park feasibility study committee report. I see we have a number of the members of the committee present. Anna, you want to just come up and sort of introduce who's here, and identify yourself, and then maybe say a few words?
I'm Anne Humphrey, chair of the Concord Dog Park Feasibility Study Committee. A very, a very long name for a very short-term committee appointed by the Board of Selectmen to look at the possibility of dog parks in Concord. And as a result of that, we did, we presented a report. First of all, well, let me introduce folks. Anne Humphrey, chair, Bob Schulman, Suzanne Jarrod, I will say that Jeff Young and Kate Stout wished they could be here, but they are out of town. Kate was our, did most of the writing of the report, so we owe her a great debt of thanks for that. Don Shobris just contacted me earlier on. He had an unavoidable conflict, and he was our scribe and did an excellent job. Deb Richardson also had a conflict tonight. But we're here, and we're very.
You provided us a preliminary report. I don't think there was too many changes sent in.
We did have a public hearing to present the preliminary. We had a sum total of, I think it varies, but eight people altogether, so, but it was well-publicized, so I think people who did come were in favor of what they read, and we didn't seem, there were no changes really that we felt we needed to make, and we heard none from you folks as a result of the preliminary. So we're here to present the final report. We're also very grateful to the fact that so many members of the town, people, let's see, well, I hesitate to name them all, but, you know, Marcia Rasmussen gave us a lot of information, and Kate Tuttle, we just spoke to several people.
Recreation Department.
Recreation Department. So they were all very helpful, and I don't, do you want me to summarize briefly what?
I think just briefly would be great.
Okay, so what we came up with is that we, after looking at lots of different properties and here in Concord, town properties, we didn't look at any private properties. If somebody wanted to donate a private property, that would be very nice. But we came up with a minimum of five acres that would be suitable, that would, in order to allow parking and things like that, other amenities. There are very few properties that would meet that. Most, all of them had some, there were five that we would look at that were even approximate. They, everyone had some issues around that, either too close to a major highway, a lot of wetlands, there was just a variety of things. So we did come up with the fact that maybe a dog park at this point in time is not feasible, but it may well be in the future. So therefore, we also looked at the possible cost to develop a dog park, and based on that, it was, excuse me, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, probably, but looking at other dog parks that have been developed. And that means, you know, drive, parking areas, water, et cetera, et cetera, fencing. And then we decided that, but that may well be a possibility in the future, so we left that open. We also, people did mention, and not that that's part of our charge, but they liked the opportunity to be able to out-walk with their dogs in fields and woods that they lived in Concord, because, some of them moved to Concord because it was open land, because there are forests and fields, and we all know Thoreau, and Thoro, excuse me. there are forests and fields and we all know Thoreau and Thoreau, excuse me, and just the, so some of the people were not really in favor of a dog park. And the other concern would be if a dog park was put in, that there would be increasing pressure to not allow dogs off-leash elsewhere. So that was something. And then, oh, and then the ongoing cost of maintaining could be an issue. That's not the primary one, but that would be one. And do you have anything else that anybody else would like to add about that?
If I recall, I think it's the last time there was a discussion about a sort of study or sent out to the dog owners, what their wishes were, and some like five hundred responses, and I think that was included.
It was.
The most recent one, but not, well, it hadn't been included in the preliminary.
It was, yes, the, the board did ask for a copy of the, of the survey, and it was clear that people really wanted to be able to walk with their dogs off-leash as much as possible, that they were not particularly in favor of a dog park at this time. But I'll also say that we had very little general response throughout the town. It's not something that a lot, came to a lot of people's interest, I guess you might say, were high on their list of things to be exercised about in Concord, no pun intended. But, so that's where.
The survey, as I recall, indicated that there was a feeling that perhaps dog owners, some education might be, component might be useful.
Indeed, we did not, again, that was not part of our, our charge, but we all felt throughout the time that we were meeting and we heard from other people that not only would it be good to provide some educational opportunities for dog owners, training their dog, how to be mostly, quite often it's training the owners, not the dogs, let's put it that way, but also people who are not dog owners, how to behave around dogs, or how, how dogs think and react to react, because it's a two-way street quite often. One thing that wasn't mentioned, that possibly there might be in the future, the Board of Selectmen might want to think about an ongoing committee surrounding dog issues that either all sorts of things relating to dogs. I know that's been a question the Board of Selectmen have had to take on any questions or concerns that dog owners or nuisance dogs or what have you, and we might be able to, if there was a committee formed, to be able to advise the select board on those issues. But that also is not part of our charge.
But I think, as I recall, you looked into how many other communities examined the issues of dog parks, and some of these issues arose in terms of how the communities were dealing with these issues.
Yes, indeed. Not only here locally, dog parks, but dog parks in other, even in other countries, how they make them work. It did come out that if there was to be a dog park, maybe a park for small dogs, certainly an acre or so for people with small dogs that didn't feel comfortable with dogs, you know, large dogs with them. And that might be a possibility to put in place sooner rather than later. But, but also the dog owners really, and it came out in the survey, dog owners really liked not only just to be able to walk their dogs, be with their dogs, but to, it's the social aspect of being with other people of like interest. One of the things that people have said they enjoy about Emerson Field, for example, is the opportunity to be part of the larger community. Just the same thing as people who play soccer or the ultimate frisky group, the Cubs.
Anybody have any questions or comments like that?
So I just want to thank you for this report. I found it extremely informative and the amount of research that you did in looking at all these other dog parks and the assessments that you had made. So I was surprised by the conclusion, because there was so much research that went into, you know, finding the best practices, and I guess that's something about your outreach and talking to a lot of people, and that was still the conclusion.
Thank you. We really enjoyed, we enjoyed doing it. We, we enjoyed, we were surprised at some of the information we got, and we really truly enjoyed our, our work. We're grateful to be having been asked to be on the committee and doing the job.
I think it was an excellent report.
Yeah, thank you.
Please thank everybody who's here, but also those who had a conflict and weren't able to make it. And I'm trying to recall when, whether we had this committee assigned until January first, or you recall?
It had a sunset, I don't remember.
Yeah. I assume we could just, in case something comes up, we won't discharge you until the date that was originally intended. We'll double check on that date.
And it's changing my.
But thank you all very much.
Yeah, really appreciate it.
Very, very welcome.
Okay, now we are ready, a little later than the continued public hearing for fiscal year nineteen tax levy classification hearing with the Board of Assessors. Welcome.
Move to reopen the public hearing.
Oh, yes, reopen. Is that a?
I guess it's.
A motion or?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you have a second to reopen? All in favor? Aye. Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christian Fisher, Chairman of the Board of Assessors. And with me tonight are some members in the audience of the Board of Assessors, Cynthia Rainey, Tom Matthews, Andrea Oki, and William Herring, and of course, Lane Partridge, the ten assessor.
Good evening.
Tonight, we're here for the classification hearing. I'd like to start with slide number six, actually. We're going to skip some of that before. This talks about the value of a town's property and the change from the prior year is about five percent. And another thing to notice in this is that the, the ratio from residential property to commercial industrial and personal property, commercial industrial and personal property is about ten percent. Let me turn to the next slide, which is slide number eight, actually. And I think this is a good place to start the discussion. This is a, this equation is very appealing in simplicity. The town needs to raise ninety-one million, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. And the value of taxable property in the town is six billion, four-hundred-and-forty-seven million, thirty-three thousand, five-hundred-and-seventeen, resulting in a tax rate of fourteen, sixteen per thousand. And from that point, tonight at our tax classification hearing, the select board needs to make four decisions. First being to decide whether there should be any shift between the burden, transferring it from residential to business. Secondly, to decide if there should be an open space discount. And third, to decide whether there should be a residential exemption. And fourth and last, to decide whether there should be a small commercial exemption. Return to slide number ten. The first issue concerns whether we want to make a transfer from, of the burden to the business sector, you know, in the foreseeable, in the distant, in the long-term past, Concord has not made any transfer. And primarily, it's been because the business only represents about ten percent of the taxable property, and it wouldn't make much difference. However, this year, you know, there's been considerable discussion about the senior tax, senior means tax exemption, and the effect it would have on the tax rate. And a senior means tax exemption results in an exemption amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand. And as we discussed at prior meetings, that would mean a three-cent difference in tax rate. And in consideration of that, and the desire to keep the tax rates the same, Board of Assessors supports a single tax rate for all classes achieved by the adoption of a residential factor, point nine-nine-nine-seven-nine-seven.
I thought it took a little extra time in order to be able to present this. I had it two weeks ago.
I noticed in this office, we don't do much rounding. Any questions on that?
No, but could I ask a procedural question?
Please.
I know we have four items that we have to take up. Should we take them up as you present them?
That's good.
Yeah. I, I think they should, normally you wait to the end and, and kind of close and make a, make a motion on each one of them, but I think it's a little more complicated than you, so I think you're probably right.
So do we want to discuss this? I don't imagine there's really much. This essentially maintains a single tax rate.
Right.
And the adjustment resulted from, the requirement for an adjustment resulted from an action taken by town meeting.
Am I?
Taken by town meeting.
Senior tax.
So I don't see any reason to do anything other than support the assessors' recommendation. I would move that we support a single tax rate for all classes achieved by the adoption of a residential factor, point nine-nine-nine-seven-nine-seven.
Any discussion? I just.
Go ahead.
My only question would be kind of next year, what will happen? Because we'll still have the senior tax exemption, and if anything, it may go up a little bit because we're getting kind of used and people are more familiar with the issue. Would we expect that there will be, the ratio will be somewhat different?
I think it'd be basically the same. I think even if we do have more applicants and it gets a little bigger, it's such a small percentage of the levy that you're going to see a factor that would be very similar, point nine-nine-nine something.
Yeah.
It's, it's very little amount to move.
Okay. Lemon?
This is just a simple question for you, probably just to educate me. Can you give me some examples of what represents personal property new growth for, you know, the commercial companies that were listed in the report?
I believe that's mostly equipment from some corporations.
Yeah, majority is equipment. Could be computers, could be desks, that's kind of a small thing. Most of our personal property growth is coming from larger companies and utilities.
Okay, I was assuming that's what it was, but I just wanted to clarify that. And whether it's now or when we go through the rest of your presentation, I'd like to hear a little bit more about your experience in implementing the senior means test of exemption, because I'm sure there, you have some comments on that, so what you may.
Well, we had fifty-nine applicants apply. We have granted forty-nine of them. It did take staff quite a bit of work, working with the seniors and getting applications filled out, getting information that we needed to judge whether they qualified or not. I'm glad there, in some respects, I mean, I want everybody to get their exemption, but I'm glad that it was a fairly small number because it was very time-consuming for staff.
Is there a learning curve that may make it easier next year, even if you have additional applicants?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, we all are more familiar with it. First year of implementation is always, you know, takes more. There was a lot of, one savings right off the bat, where we created a large spreadsheet to figure out whether they apply, the people that applied would qualify or not, so that's already made, and just strip it up, put the new people in. So there's some savings there. Definitely staff is more familiar with it, knows what questions to ask to get the information that we need, so there's definitely some savings to it.
Thank you.
We ready to vote?
The motion's been made.
Seconded, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against? The ayes have it. Thank you, and we'll move to number two.
All right, very good. Number two is the open space discount, to decide whether there should be an open space discount. In Concord, certainly is open space, but there is no, no land, no taxable land classified as open space. Any open space land is generally under chapter sixty-one, sixty-one A or sixty-one B, which represents agricultural land or forestry land. So because it's a non-issue, the Board of Assessors recommends that the select, selectmen not adopt an open space discount.
I think we discussed, I remember last year, sort of the same discussion. I don't know whether we need, anybody have a question about this, or?
We're move to adopt it, not to adopt an open space.
Not to grant, right.
Not, not to adopt an open space discount.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're.
Okay.
Residential exemption.
Onto the residential exemption, number three, to decide whether there should be a residential exemption. On slide number twelve, you have that up there already, only thirteen out of three-hundred-and-fifty-one Massachusetts communities do this. It's more typically done in vacation areas where there are a lot of second homes. That is not the case in Concord, where most, most of the homes are owner-occupied, and therefore, the Board of Assessors does not support an adoption of the residential exemption.
Any questions or comments regarding that?
So, we very.
We are?
And I would move not to support the adoption of a residential exemption.
Circle. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And the last issue, to decide whether there should be a small commercial exemption. And the small commercial exemption was designed to allow a small, a break to small businesses, which are typically more, struggling more. The issue, though, is most of the small businesses in Concord rent their property rather than own their property, so it's not, not a definite that they, they would receive an exemption from this, from this by design. So because of that, the Board of Assessors does not support the adoption of a small commercial exemption.
Discussion? And I think this has been the practice for quite a while, so we're not changing anything particularly here.
Right, it's consistent.
Have a.
So I would move that we not adopt a small commercial exemption.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you, and that concludes the tax classification issues.
Well, I want to thank you for the report, because it's extremely informative in terms of.
Has a lot in there.
It does have a lot in there.
Every year I look at that and say, I gotta write this again? That's good. One last thing.
You're getting better at reading it.
Yeah, it'll put you right to sleep. It's very good for that. If we could get signatures on the L A five, just that we had the classification here, with a yellow sign and some beakers.
I just want to, I just would like to, our behalf, extend our thanks to the lady, and I hope you'll convey it to your staff for all the work they did do to see the implementation of the senior tax exemption. And I'll, I'll talk about it when we have our committee reports a little bit later on, but there's more sort of to talk about in terms of going forward.
Procedurally, I think we need to close this public hearing.
Let's close the public hearing. I move to close this public hearing.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I agree with that, too. That's, I know it's the last of four.
Line up. Are, as a majority of signatures enough?
Yeah, a majority, yeah. We are now ready to discuss the fiscal year 2020 budget.
First, I think we're.
Yeah. Andrew, can you put up the grid? I was just going to put up a.
We are now ready to discuss the fiscal year 2020 budget.
Andrew, can you put up the first? I was just going to put up the first three slides, which you recall from Saturday, relative to the finance committees. So next one, please. Here's the finance committee's guideline, again, which they increased by $71,000 above the preliminary guideline. And it's a 4.42% increase. And the items that they recommend to be considered for funding are the ones shown there. I might make some changes to that, but essentially they're saying, at that level of funding, they would provide resources for the 2.5% cost of living adjustment for employees, the sustainability director's full salary would be built into the budget, a portion of the school resource officer for the middle school would be built into the budget, and that would have to increase over time, one new parks maintenance position of the two that had been requested, and then some funds for operating White Beach, which we hope will be diminishing over time. This, we have funding for next summer at $30,000. This request is 20, and we are hoping it will go to 10 and disappear. So that's a sample of the things that would be included at that guideline level. And the next slide, Andrew, shows the things that I thought were important. It's not, doesn't represent the total amount all department heads requested, but the things that really need some further consideration, guidance from the board on where you'd like to go. The firefighters is probably the most important thing. Six years ago, the town approved the staffing of a second ambulance that would be housed in West Concord, using some of the funds from the Muse stabilization fund. I think this, essentially, it went from the million dollars that was in that stabilization from the Concord Muse, which was mitigation funding for public safety matters related to the new apartment facility. That got spent down to about $650,000. We used about $300,000, $350,000 of those funds to get the ambulance up and running for the current schedule, which is seven days a week, 12 hours. And as I mentioned on Saturday, that captures about 70% of the medical and other emergencies that happen are happening during the 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM timeframe. So we've got the majority of medical calls get captured during that time period, but there's still a significant number, 30% of the calls occur when there's a single ambulance on Walden Street. And the fire chief mentioned to me after Saturday's discussion that the ambulance is partially staffed. The crew that staffs the ambulance also staffs the ladder. So if the ladder is out on a call, it's the ambulance crew that has to return or otherwise. So as opposed to in West Concord, the staff that staffs the ambulance, a dedicated ambulance staff. So the, you know, in the evening hours, you've got the one ambulance on Walden Street to serve the entire town, and the crew may also be working the area ladder. So I think that in the commitment, or the proposal at the time, was that we would go have a 12/7 operation for five years, and that hopefully in five years, we'd be able to staff it 24/7. Last year at this time, I didn't think we had sufficient funds to staff it, so I asked the fire chief for a delay in the request, which he agreed to. But it does seem like this is the time now. The population is growing, we're continuing to have construction as more people move in, particularly in West Concord. And it seems like this is the time to put it, at least put it before the voters, do they want to fully staff that ambulance? So that's a question for the board. The receptionist in the town manager's office, I mentioned, the assistant town manager has picked up responsibility for the public information officer, the sustainability director, and now is five or six peg access or Minuteman Media Network staff, all of whom get phone calls and need messages taken. And the staff in the town manager's office has been essentially the same since I've been here. Andrew and Heather are the two staff that are there. Now the staff that they provide support to has almost doubled. So it's, the strain is showing a little bit, and I would suggest, and HR has had a similar problem, that there's just a lot of, we've had a lot of staff turnover, so there are more job applications. The state has imposed more legal regulations on the HR department, they must conform to certain things that they have to comply with, and that has put some strain on them. So we would share that resource if the community supports funding for it. The IT position, I've mentioned that both in the police department and the fire, excuse me, library, they've had internal staff that for many years, more than 20 years, they came in, they had a knack for technology 20 years ago perhaps, and it's just hard to keep up, to be a police, continue your service as a police officer, but also maintain currency with the IT changes, the same at the library. And the library just seems to be dramatically increasing the amount of technology they're making available to patrons. So it seems like it's time to dedicate some IT, some real IT capacity to both of those two departments, particularly because of their heavy information workload. And the second part, maintenance staff member, I mentioned, with the acquisition of the Giraud property and plans to improve that property, plus the donation of 18 acres at White Pond, plus the expansion of the ride-out playground and greater activity and use of Emerson Field, there's just a lot of parkland that needs some attention and hasn't been getting it of late. And my recommendation is that we need two year-round staff people to help out with all that work. Senior services continue to have demand. The more people use it, the more people become aware of it, and there really is, it's great. We have three, we operated two vans for many years, now we're operating three, and that gets heavily subscribed.
We get more seniors.
And we have more seniors all the time. So that's an area that we've gradually worked up our services in that area, but the demand is still there. And then finally, the capital equipment is just a budgetary thing, where we tried to target about 2.5% of our operating budget to be dedicated to vehicles, computers, equipment, that sort of thing. And that amount of spending should increase as the budget increases in order to maintain our commitment to capital as opposed to salaries. So that, if you add all those additional items in there, it's a total of $343,000. That would bring the grand total up to $1,414,000, and that's a 5.9% increase. That's significant. I recognize that. Mark Howell, the IT, said, you're not really talking about a level services budget. And I'm really not. A lot of times, we are saying, level services budget, what's needed to just keep the programs we have in place. This is an expansion of programs to include the new parks that we've added, the firefighters, the 24/7 operation, the ambulance, that sort of thing. So I'm not making the argument that this is a level services year.
Chris, the capital one is. Yep. The capital one is just, there's not a particular capital line item sort of budget.
We have a five-year capital equipment plan that is oversubscribed every year. So we do identify computer replacement, police cruiser replacements, fire engine, the larger engines go in.
So it's just normal capital.
Yes, normal capital, vehicles and equipment.
And $90,000, that would be supplemented by?
That would be supplemented. Essentially, the, good question. We would be, if we made this move, we agree to do this, you would have to agree to add $90,000 this year above the existing budget, and another $90,000 the second year, and another $90,000 in the third year. And you would be utilizing the Concord Muse stabilization fund, that would be going down as the town's contribution ramps up. In the fourth year, it would be 100% funded through the general fund.
Notice that's what we agreed to do.
The fire chief said that, he thought that was the understanding. We'd announced at the time, the votes.
Town meeting.
Town meeting, that, you know, it's going to be a five, we have a five-year plan, we're going to operate it on a halftime basis for five years, after which we hope to fund, to staff it 24/7. So again, we delayed last year. We really should have been having this conversation a year ago, so it is time now to have a conversation.
So, Chris, again, you said $90,000 each of the next three years, and then on the fourth year, the town budget would have to.
No, well, in that, by that time, in that third year, after that, then there would be sufficient funds, then all that would be required. It should be another 90 after that. It might be a small amount to cover salary increases for those new firefighters, but it should, after the third year, that funding for those four firefighters would have been baked into the operating budget.
Is there kind of an equity issue that we provide, if you will, excellent ambulance service for this part of Concord, but West Concord gets left out?
I think some people would say, yes, there is kind of an equity issue. Historically, the ambulance operated out of Walden Street headquarters, and, but now with the Muse, both the police and the fire departments do respond to that far side of town quite frequently. And the idea of having the ambulance come from Walden Street to provide response in all of West Concord is, you know, and raises an equation.
What is the population difference? Do you know, by any?
I don't know. The Muse added 1,000 residents, so, and that's where the growth has happened. But how it compares.
And if we get Junction Village, there's likely to be further.
Further growth and demand in service. Yeah.
So, am I understanding what you said about the one ambulance out of Walden Street is 24/7, but staff have double duty?
That's correct.
So it's actually less than 24/7 if there's a fire somewhere.
The fire chief refers to it as half of an ambulance.
Right.
It's really not, it's really not a dedicated ambulance crew that's dedicated to that alone.
It's completely argumental, right? You know, as population grows in ages, and I know how difficult it is getting to West Concord during certain hours of the day, that having a jumpstart in being located in West Concord would be a huge benefit for residents on that side of town. So would you take, tell me how this would work procedurally at town meeting? Would you take each one of these up separately? Would it be a single recommendation from this board to support this expanded budget? Having seen this?
Well, we would normally, we'd normally, depending on, if you were to say support all of these items, we would make, put them into the budget and call them out specifically. So folks would be able to see what last year's budget for parks services was, and it would show an increase. Same thing with the fire departments, it would be able to call out. But I would put them into the operating budget, because unlike the sustainability, I tried to describe what happened with the sustainability director, that was a special article. Town meeting voted $100,000 to support the position, but it wasn't in the budget. So then last year, I had to get the $40,000, $60,000 into the budget, and this year, we had to have the remainder. So it took us two years to get that position baked into the budget, so to speak.
But if, just follow up on how this is coming, suppose we said, go for it. You would just change your budget to 1.414, and assuming that there was no change in the guideline of the finance committee, we would go to town meeting, and we would have a warrant article, it would be the town's warrant article, 1.414, and we'd have a recommendation from the finance committee to not approve it because it's outside the guideline, and the town would figure it out. We don't have a process, do we, of, you know, picking things out of budgets? Wouldn't they vote yes or no on the budget?
Well, we have a line item budget, so there are 42 separate spending accounts, so some of these funds would be dispersed within those separate spending accounts. So I think if somebody wanted to reduce it by, say, $100,000, they might.
There could be an amendment.
Somebody would have to offer an amendment to reduce the spending on parks by $50,000 and spending on some other amount of capital by another $50,000.
But it would still be an up or down vote on whatever that number is.
Yes, could be.
Yes. Can you help me understand? I understand any information technology backline item. Why is the fire department in there? It seems like they would have equally the need for high-quality, up-to-date IT services.
Good question. The level of, because of, I think it's in part because the police department supervises the dispatch operation, that a lot of the work takes place in the dispatch. They have an automated recording system, so, you know, when the calls are made, everything is recorded and automated. And we have to stay current with that. There is a significant amount that the fire department does, and I would anticipate that this person would probably be shared. I think it really is, the PD does substantially more because of the dispatch operation, reporting, but the intent would really be, I guess, public safety. Good point, we talked about that during the budget process.
And this can't come out of the Muse, you know, reserve for public safety?
The, I think, Carrie, perhaps help me, that my understanding is that if we do the four firefighters and the school resource officer, as we discussed, that will substantially diminish the, at the end of three years, the stabilization fund will be all about concern. There might be a little bit left, but it won't be much.
And I, how often do the firefighters, do we have any kind of statistic, respond during the evening time?
Oh, yeah, that was where I got the statistic. That, I think it might have been in the first two years of operation. I don't know if it's completely current, but I think we did a look back to see, once we got started with the second ambulance, what were the calls? And it was that we were capturing, again, about 70% of the medical calls in the West Concord area were being, and the difference in time response is about two minutes, as I recall. So we were capturing most of the calls, which is what we wanted to do, and the response time was better as a result. But there's still 12 hours of the day when, and, you know, part of what's happening is people are not feeling well, they go to the doctor's office, and then it turns out they should be admitted to the hospital. So there's a lot of those daytime calls, activity that's going on. But things happen at night that the ambulance is coming from Walden Street.
And to me, the safety is number one, and I find it very difficult to kind of say that, you know, people in one part of the town should get better service than people in the other part of the town. So I would have a difficult time not urging the four new firefighters.
So, and Andrew, if you could go back to the other slide, again, these were the, because the finance committee was thoughtful and said, you know, if we'll increase the allowance to the $1,071,000, and we think, it's up to you, but if we think, we'd fund the following things. So, and I think I would agree on the sustainability director, I think we made a commitment to that, the school resource officer, it makes sense, we could take more from the Muse stabilization fund perhaps, but I think that makes some sense. The park maintenance position versus the firefighters, we might take a look at that, but that wouldn't be enough to fund that and White Pond Beach operation. So, you know, I might do something different with the park maintenance staff, although having, we do hope to build some facilities at Giraud Park and make them available to the public.
Maybe not two.
But maybe perhaps not two.
Since, I think of all those on Giraud up there, I mean, we're going to need them sometime to bring your White Pond online and Giraud property, property, you know, that. But it's going to be a while before Giraud Beach brought up. I think we could probably pass on the second maintenance position. It's only $10,000, but there's, I forgot what the balance is in Muse.
It's currently $650,000, $650,000. So it'd seem to me like $10,000 in one year, and perhaps even $10,000 in three years. You know, I don't think, I think we should be able to swing that.
That's my second, I, and of course, the White Pond one, the hope is about this is added to the budget this year, subsequent budgets, we're going to be breakeven kind of.
Correct. I think Kate Hodges' hope is that we don't even spend the amount that's been allocated for next summer, let alone the $20,000 here, but to, you know, to be reasonable.
You know, the adoption.
You have to be conservative.
I think particularly early, we want to set a good example, make sure people are going to feel comfortable with that.
So we perhaps can save $10,000 on this first page, and then bring it back to the second page. At least my thinking, anyway, is that 50 for the second staff position. Tell me a little bit more about the van expenses. What is it?
So, we bought a third van. We purchased a third van with town resources. In the past, we were relying on the Friends of Concord seniors to donate a van. The vans came with restrictions, only seniors, they could never take another passenger that wasn't 60 years old. And we wanted to have the flexibility to perhaps join a regional network and have our van participate in the crosstown connect regional network services, so that we get more services available by joining with other towns. But if our vans can only be used by certain people, that's a problem. So, anyway, we have, we purchased, we had some funds to purchase the van, but we don't have all the funds necessary to staff it and to make repairs and provide fuel and that sort of thing. So some of the time, it's not as well-used as it could be if we had the staffing.
Is it busting at the seams? I mean, I know there's more demand.
Well, I, one, just recent example, on the snow days, we had trouble filling the need because people didn't cancel their medical appointments on the snowy days, we actually had to send the van out, and it was a challenge to do it on those days. So I know there's, even on a snowy day, people still needed to get those.
Was that like a coloquial demand problem?
The demand for services are certainly increasing for all of senior services.
So, yeah, they're busting at this, it's being fully utilized. And I think it would be, what this means is it would be used more, it would be used would be, what this means is it would be used more, we'd be using the three vans more frequently with more driver time and more fuel, and therefore perhaps some more repairs. That's what it will allow us to do. We're not, we're not using it 100% of its availability.
Capital equipment, I think, is a, is a very hard, it's a very easy one to cut.
Right. Nobody complains.
Very bad ones to cut, because you just dig yourself a deeper hole. But I'm, so, I mean, I, I certainly don't want to see us dig a hole, and we just have to come back at some time and complain that, you know, the wheels are falling off the car and stuff like that. But we probably should try to make some additional economies in that, cutting it back some a little bit.
And specificity there would help.
Well, I asked, after I asked it, I felt kind of dumb asking it, because I know there's a whole, you know, a whole schedule of computer replacements and car repairs.
And it's oversubscribed, so there's, you know, there's more requests than we can, than we can fully fund. But we do have a plan for police cruiser replacement, and that's, so we don't find ourselves with no funds to replace, we replace three cruisers every year, essentially.
I don't know how to say, well, I'm gonna say, it's seeming negative, but it's not meant to be. The deal we have at the library is they're responsible for capital stuff, and we're responsible for operating stuff.
Essentially.
Right? And I recall in CPC, they were getting some capital from the town's CPC funds.
They have requested funds, and I have recommended-
Supported, wasn't it? Wasn't it supported by?
Yes, I think it, it's five, the request was for $500,000.
Wasn't that supported?
Has been supported as well.
Well, CPC hasn't voted yet, and-
It's on your list. Did you present it on Saturday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't need, I'm sorry.
Just, okay.
Yeah.
Some of it was, I think, for disability, from the compliance.
Right. My point is, that's capital, which they're supposed to be doing. And this is operations, which we're supposed to, somehow they're tapping into the capital stream.
So, and Andrew, can, the next slide, which is the debt plan, there's the debt plan. So these are the warrant articles, somewhat to your point, they're just for full disclosure, this is the total amount of borrowing that we have available, and so suggesting the town buildings, public parks, land acquisition for open spaces, the Emerson Land, and there's also, so there's two allocations, request for funding from the library, this one's for furniture, fixture and equipment, furniture, shelving, that sort of thing, the town funds can be used for that. It's not bricks and mortar, we are prohibited by the Massachusetts Constitution from making a donation to the library, so we have to actually purchase something. And then, it's a unique aspect of this Community Preservation Act, is that those funds can be used for making a building handicapped accessible. So I think that's the request for the CPC fund. So, but nevertheless, I just wanted to be clear, there's two requests for funding.
The library fixtures, I believe, were gonna be the lighting, which will then reduce our electrical costs.
Right.
So, yeah. I can't complain about that, so I've been wanting to say-
No, no, no.
We're talking about the ants, right? These are all costs related to the construction and renovation of that home.
51 Main Street, yeah, this is, this is related to their expansion project, this request here. And last spring, we allocated, I think it was $180,000 last spring, to support the energy-efficient lighting, and I think energy-efficient heating system.
I think we got grant funded for that.
And I think so.
Yeah. We got minor green communities.
So we could go back to the other slide, just on the topic. So if you'd like, you have another meeting in December before the warrant closes, if you'd like me to take another look at this and-
My question, so if you go back to the first one, and we said, and we said to you, well, you see that $500,000 for town buildings, it's top there, why you're not that down to four and a quarter? Use the savings to fund the capital improvements on the previous phase.
Does the finance director want to respond to that? The issue is that we're, it's not cash, often it's confused as cash, but it's borrowing capacity, right? So it, the-
Finance director was making a calculation, and he already said.
So the question is, you know, if, could we help balance the operate, bring the operating budget down by, it's not doing the town building renovation to just pick a project.
Okay, so that was the calculation I was making.
And we help the problem we have with the, the operating budget by dealing with the debt.
Right. So, so our policy is a total of seven to eight percent on capital, two to three percent on the operating capital, and five to six on the, on the borrowed, on the dead authorization. So right now, we're, I think, at about 2.38% on the operating capital, and just over, over 5%, so we're, we're pretty close to, to the lower limits of, of the policy right now.
And it doesn't really, even if we were to do that, it, it wouldn't really provide any resources that we could spend on, you know, firefighters, for example.
No, which could be a computer.
Yes.
Right. So we-
Fungible.
Yeah, we certainly can look at that and see if we have any flexibility.
But now borrowing, generally, the capital, operating budget capitals for shorter term, the vehicles that don't last that long, the computers that don't use that-
But it is fungible.
To a certain extent.
To, to a certain extent, yes, with the, with the building projects.
Well, my hope would be, look at that and see if there's some way to make this number on the second page go down. Other than that, though, I'm supporting, I'll put page two back up there. I think the town, I think the town agreed to do this funding for firefighters, I think that's something the town agreed to do a long time ago. Maybe the interest of being fiscally more conservative, we could slow it a little bit. Go to three, and spend it out under a year.
You can't, right, it doesn't, you have to do four, in groups of four, if you want to cover a 12-hour period like that. Because we would have, there'd be one group where it wouldn't, there's four groups of firefighters, we'd be adding one to each of those groups so they could staff around the clock, and then, so they'd be a group that would not have sufficient staff.
I know that we have the finance chair here, and I saw him waving, hoping to maybe address us, so, Tom, if you'd like to make a couple of comments, we're happy to have you do so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Tom Tarpe, 169 Heathbridge Road, Chair of the Finance Committee and speaking for the Finance Committee. Several things are going through my mind, listening to your conversation. One is, why on earth has the Finance Committee, to the best of my knowledge, never asked to see a graph of the census of town employees? What has been the trajectory of our census of town employees over the years? This is why we haven't asked this, I don't know, but I think that's a very important piece of information to have. Looking at the numbers up here, I have to keep reminding myself that as far as employees go, they represent salary only, to the best of my understanding.
That's correct.
And there is no, there is, there's a burden on each one of those salaried employees, and I don't know what that number is, I can't remember, is it 25% or 30%?
I think it's 25%. That's for benefit costs, related to health insurance, retirement.
Right. So I really think that that needs to be kept in mind when you look at that 1,414 number, that there's got to be a certain increase factored in there to understand what the full effect of adding those people is. Also, I have to keep reminding myself that the $90,000 up there for, for new firefighters to staff the ambulance 24/7, won't be $90,000 for long. I mean, it will, at some point, be somewhere between $360,000 and $400,000 in terms of total outlay from the town, in the not-too-distant future. And in terms of our census of full-time employees, I'm guessing that it has been a pretty smooth trajectory, and there hasn't been a whole lot of up and down over the years, but that's just a guess, as I said.
We do, we do publish the census of employees in the budget book each year.
So I could look that up and-
Okay, page 79 in the current year, current year's book.
Okay.
So, and we could easily take each of the, you know, create that census and show the trend line.
I think that would be worth doing. And next, I just want to ask some questions that we should have asked in the Finance Committee when you were before us, Chris. But the, the statistic, about 70% of the calls being covered in the 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and 30% not having to be served by the Walden crew. What, what's the, what is the percentage of adverse outcomes? In other words, it takes a little longer, but are we losing people? Or, you know, or, it, nobody wants, those minutes you're waiting for the ambulance are very long minutes. But what is the, what is the actual effect? And, you know.
I think we don't, those, we wouldn't have those stats at the ready, that would take some kind of study and analysis to come up with the results, and that sort of thing. It's not impossible to do, but it isn't something that could be done easily.
I'm gonna guess that there are some standards on ambulance expectations for, for the departure to arrival, and then arrival to the hospital.
Sure. And during, there are national standards, and when we're staffed, when we have both ambulances staffed, we meet the national expectations for response time. When we're, when we're short on the ambulance, we do not meet the national standard.
And what I'm hearing also is that not only are we kind of staffing West Concord in this, but we're having kind of a backup staffing for Concord proper, if there's a fire or something else going on. So, you know, it's not just kind of the added, it's really getting us up to a standard that I, you know, in my mind, Concord should have. I appreciate that, you know, that you have to worry about the budget, but of any area, I think this is one I would give a very high priority.
I saved my peace.
No, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
You don't have an easy job. You may look like Santa, but you have to close it down.
Should we have a, come back in a couple of weeks to finalize that?
Yeah, now, I'll speak personally for myself, personally for myself, I, I would like to see some of these items included in the town's budget, because I think we made commitments to doing some of these things. Senior services here, we're supposed to provide support staff. So I'd like, but having said that, I've also, I hope, made some suggestions, I would like to, I'd like to see you come back in a couple of weeks with that. Another one, give us a chance to go back to Tom and his folks and talk to them about our concerns and our issues. The Finance Committee, the town is still a bit on history of trying to work this stuff out as well. I'm happy to continue to do that.
I would only add that the reception at town manager office, that might allow Andrew a little bit more time to do the minutes, which I know would please the League of Women Voters at the family theater. If we don't get these extra, I mean, the services are gonna be hit. So it's not kind of just fluff, they're necessary, I think.
Agreed.
So with that in mind, I guess we can move on to the, consider free parking Saturday, December 15th and December 22nd.
We had a request for, you know, free, essentially free parking during the holiday season to encourage people to shop downtown. Parking is free on Sundays anyway, so by approving, and I think the police chief really wants to see the board, you adopt the parking restriction, so it's appropriate for the board to lessen or relax, relax the parking restriction. So he's, he has recommended the last two Saturdays before Christmas, do we have those dates in front of us? And, and, but he also suggests that you exclude the commuter parking lots, where those do get used by commuters from out of town that are going downtown or what have you, and that-
Charge extra for those.
The 15th and 22nd.
Anybody have any sort of questions or comments or feelings about this? I know that we were asked to do it before, and it changed, I mean, we got a good reception when we did it, and I think it's a way of signaling to the businesses in town that we're doing this to kind of help them.
Any reason we're not including the 28th? I know it's after Christmas, but it's often friends have Christmas sales or shopping.
Usually do that much.
We did all the Saturdays.
Not just the two, I don't think.
I don't know if started the 15th, but we did, and we did it Saturdays for the rest of the calendar year.
Do the 29th.
It's a pretty busy time, after Christmas and New Year's.
So we decided it was the 29th would be-
Yeah, 15th, 22nd, 29th.
So we just have a motion.
I move that we offer unpaid parking for the holiday seasons on Saturday, December 15th, December 22nd, and December 29th.
Commuter lots are not to be included.
Yes, commuter lots are not included in the free parking waiver.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Annual license renewal. And if we, these are license for-
Renewals of licenses for various things, including liquor license, but also entertainment license.
Yeah, we got a memo on December 3rd of the, three pages, so I don't think I will read them all, but-
So, can I just-
I know you all have, and digested it, so.
So can I just make a few comments on this?
Yes, please.
So, this is updated to this morning, there's a few stragglers that came in for CV licenses. So the board has their second meeting in two weeks, so we could do those ones on the-
Straggler licenses at that point.
Yeah, and there are a few more. The ones that were required to be signed and returned back to the board in November were the liquor licenses. So those ones are all listed here, you have the Section 12 for alcohol, Section 12 for wine and malt, those are restaurants, and then you have the retail stores. There was one establishment that did not submit their paperwork in November, so they will be reapplying for a new license. The MGL requires that you have your documents signed and returned back to the local licensing authority in November, and they failed to complete that. So they will be applying in the next couple of days.
Will that affect their business operation?
Well, from an alcohol standpoint, yes. They have a CV license, and that can get renewed, but they won't be able to have any alcohol.
Until the AVCC approves the license of the board, and the AVCC approve the license. So there will be a delay. An extra effort was made to contact this one, one license holder, who didn't seem to put a lot of attention into it until after the deadline passed.
One way to learn a lesson.
So you'll be seeing this again, some of these, some more licenses on the 17th as well.
Do we need to vote to on this, or?
You do need to vote to approve the renewal applications.
I move to approve the 2019 annual license renewal, and it's listed on the November date, December 3rd, 2018.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now, consider the selection of the town manager cert consultant.
You should have a memo from, you ready? What do you want to do?
I know I have it.
Here.
Third to the last.
Got it. Do you want to go? Do you want the short version or the long?
The long version. Oh, you didn't ask me.
All started. So we, Alice and I constituted a subcommittee to recommend this select board, a consulting firm to help us with the town manager cert. We sent out an RFP, we received seven responses to that. We met, all of our meetings were in open session, we met in open session, and picked the top- the top three firms to invite them back for interviews. We conducted three interviews of those firms on November twenty-eighth. And then on, on that day, we also discussed each of the proposals and got to a preliminary ranking of the proposals, absent checking references, absent the final, the financial bids. Alice and I were assigned a job of checking references for the top two of the three after the interviews, which, which we both did. Then we met on November twenty-ninth, straight in the afternoon, with Mr., with John Harris. And Mr. Harris opened to seal bids and we've completed our final ranking of the proposals. And I have a memo that Alice and I wrote to Tom as Chair of the Select Board. Would you like me to just read it?
Please, sure.
Subcommittee member ties to first review the seven RFPs received, next to review the RFPs, third to interview the three finalists and rank them according to the criteria in the town's request for proposals. Independently, Ms. Kaufman, Mr. Lawson checked the references of the top two firms, Community Paradigm Associates and Municipal Resources, Inc. On November twenty-ninth, we met again to open the visits of finalists, to report out the reference checks and to complete our final ranking. We engaged in a final discussion and review of the comparative strengths of the finalists. Mr. Kaufman and Mr. Lawson recommended the contract be awarded to Municipal Resources, Inc. We wish to thank Amy Foley and John Harris for their significant assistance in every step in this process.
We have copies of the proposals, if anybody is interested in seeing them as well.
I believe they were the consultants also for the town of Akron in their search, so...
Yes. All of, all of the firms that we had interviewed had done recent searches in our sort of area.
Which I think is valuable and important, and what I...
It was, and I think we were, especially for the top two finalists that we looked at, Community Paradigm and MRI, they were both excellent. They've got outstanding reviews from every single one of the folks we spoke with, they did a great job presenting. I think we would have been happy, but with either of the two firms, in our judgment, I think it was a little better match with MRI and what we're, what we're about, so that was our recommendation.
And if we endorse your recommendation, what would, what's the next sort of steps and processes?
The next step is tomorrow morning. I think I was designated to call MRI, I can't remember exactly when you were gonna call Community Paradigm and the third, number three on the list, Mr. Harris was going to call, and he was also going to send an email to the four that we didn't have as finalists. The Town Manager Search Committee met on November twenty-sixth for our first organizing meeting, and our next meeting is December eighteenth. And when we interviewed the firms, we made them aware of that, and they voted, all three of the people we interviewed indicated they would make themselves available. So the next thing that will happen, I suspect, is that Alice and I will meet with the firm and try to work out an agenda for our meeting on December eighteenth. And our figuring is that's probably the only meeting we'll get in this calendar year, and so we want to try to make it as productive a meeting as we can.
So a contract will be signed with the MRI?
We will work with Amy Foley and with John Harris and draft a contract with MRI.
We should say that, you know, the, the processes that were laid out by the different firms were similar in some respects and differed in others, but each of them will have a very significant community outreach component. There'll be at least two public forums, there'll be focus groups for them to meet with. I think that we, they have suggested that they meet with the heads, the chairs of as many of the committees as possible. We had suggested perhaps having them come to one of the chair breakfasts as a first thing, because the very first task is figuring out the qualities that they're, that the town is thinking about or seeks in the next Town Manager. And they developed what's considered, they all call the safety, the community profile.
A January meeting might be the one to do it, because it's probably not as, the committee is not gonna be as active as the rest of the committees.
But we'll be enough abstract, you know, from January on to pick some products. And, you know, we had discussed quite a bit about the process that the school had used in hiring the superintendent, that that process was really well done. There was ample opportunity for the public to attend, to weigh in, to offer thoughts and opinions, and we want to emulate that and duplicate it here where we can, and I think our firm is up to the task board.
Linda, do you have any questions to come? I think I know what the other two may vote.
No, you know, I suspected that whatever firm you hired would have a robust outreach plan, and one of the questions I have, and this may get answered later, but in terms of the select board being aware, particularly of staff, key staff outreach, having that being a public meeting or at least an opportunity for us to participate in that, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, definitely is my reply.
I think there were clearly, town staff was identified as constituents.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I would guess, yeah.
We want to make sure they have a chance to weigh in, talk about it, they're more careful.
And know a certain amount about the town.
They do know a little.
But, but I think it's critical for all of us to be aware, yeah.
The search committee, a subcommittee who reviews applicants and stuff like that, has the opportunity to do that, to maintain confidentiality. And then as we near the end of the process, a certain number of candidates will be recommended to the full board. And once we do that, then we're in open session, we look at all of our discussions of the candidates and all of the interviews of the candidates in open session.
Good.
If we're ready to move, wanna do the language?
Well, sure. So I guess it's moved to approve the selection of Municipal Resources as the town's search firm, executive search firm.
And enter into a contract.
Enter into a contract.
Terms of agreements that does...
It's laid out in the RFP.
Yeah, yeah. Do I hear a second?
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, that's, I think that's a lot of progress. Yes, if you'd like Diane, thank you.
Diane Proctor, fifty-seven Sudbury Road, and I speak as the President of the League of Women Voters with enormous humility and not trying to forward ourselves in inappropriate ways. We've worked hand and glove with the town over the years to establish protocols for how the town government systems work and are active observers of committees, and we would hope that when the, the consulting firm gets going, that we might have an opportunity as a league to be able to sit down with a consultant and share some thoughts about what has worked well and, and, you know, and it's hard to match what Chris has done, but, but, you know, what's worked well and how we can sustain those things and how things might go forward. So if that's part of your considerations, we would be grateful.
Thank you. Okay, town meeting, preview meeting recap.
So I just was gonna say, one of the reasons I suggested this, Tom, is that I had some articles that I presented that I've been thinking about, but then it's needing some guidance from you on whether you're interested in the town clerk's request for authorization to, on election workers, the change in the posting of the warrant where those locations and transfer of land to the Housing Authority, which is requested, those sort of things. In addition to whatever else you may be speaking about, I wanted to be sure before proceeding to draft more on articles on that.
I would add to that, the change in the trustee for...
A lot of...
Having the treasurer of the town service trustee...
For the old...
For the old, yeah. I think that's a positive recommendation from the Financial Audit Advisory Committee and from the trustees of town donation. What will need to be done, if I'm recalling correctly the way we were thinking about it though, is to whether we would want to go back and add to the charge of the trustees of town donation, so that they would be asked to provide guidance and oversight to the trustee, the treasurer, so that she would have someone that she could, you know, formally interact with and could provide her with a way of, you know, some transparency, because this is, this is gonna, this is a big account. And I think a firm as to her, she's taken on that responsibility and tried to provide, we provided some, some way to get some assistance and to ensure that we're doing as transparently as possible.
Chris, am I correct that the, there needs to be somewhat of a change in the bylaw, that the curator of the library is not directed by the select board, but by...
I would suggest that the, there is a bylaw, records and archives bylaw, that says that the select board shall appoint somebody that works at the library to serve as the town archivist, and we've been talking to the Library Corporation, and it really seems like it would make more sense to have that person report to the town clerk, be appointed by the town manager. I'll draft something that looks like that.
That's more of a cleaning up, a major change, but I think that's important.
Right, still, I guess I would also mention in the recapture, there's just still a lot of work to be done on the, on whatever the warrant articles are gonna be for affordable housing.
Yes.
I think the one about the use of free cash is clear in the sense of, it's free cash, and what we haven't set an amount that we'd be allocating, only that if free cash was within the, our guideline. But together to a much more complicated, reached out to Representative Kaufman to ask if he could be to talk about that, but I do, Kaufman...
Yeah, who is?
I think the free cash, I guess the question is, you know, is the bottom line a five percent, or should it be higher than a five percent?
I think the question is not in terms of percent, right? As long as we have free cash in the range of five to ten percent, that's set by the Finance Committee as policy.
The guideline.
Oh, guideline, okay. Then that allows us, and that, you know, if we have that cushion, we have, we get to set a number that we could put aside for affordable housing. You know, we talked about possibly five hundred thousand, but we didn't vote on that as a number.
I guess my question is whether the five percent amount is something that, A, we are comfortable with, and B, that Moody's might be comfortable with, and whether we should get input from the Finance Committee regarding that of the bottom line. I, I mean, at one point, when we're above ten percent, it's an easy question, but if we're five point two percent, I get a little more nervous.
Well, I don't take the way I was envisioning it, or I don't require a transfer, it would simply permit. So, you know, if we look at it, and it's right on the edge, we would get an opinion in front of the Finance Committee about whether they thought we ought to do that. We'd have an opinion, and we'll figure it out, so. I don't, I don't think we need to change the bottom number, but it's not a requirement to transfer, it's just the opportunity. So we can be committing the board members' perspective on what it means to be at five point one.
So hopefully we'll get some assistance from Town Council.
Yes.
I think we also still need to discuss Walden Woods. We have not, as a board, made a...
I did, you will see a draft article, I expect to get it in the next few days, so you'll have a chance to look at that and respond to that, correct?
So we should put that on our agenda to discuss and the...
I think it already is on the seventeen.
Because we only have like one more meeting before...
Correct.
The one closes.
Wasn't to get, we don't have to get it everything exactly, but we...
They're good placeholders.
Yeah, because we... Warrant goes to the printer on the seventeenth, the January, so.
Well, even then, I mean, remember warrants are not the same as motions to Town Manager, so we still have a little bit of flexibility when it gets to Town Manager, as long as moderator doesn't take it kind of fast.
Linda, do you have any comments you...
So, I did note, however, that, you know, in the past, sometimes at these preview meetings, is an opportunity for people to raise questions, more questions and concerns about issues that are being thought about, and we got a couple of comments, but not as many as I would hope. It just gives us a window on going forward.
I do think that is, we were just being very reasonable, so nobody'd have any problems.
There you go.
I was looking on the bright side of it.
Well, I should too. The public hearings that we have have, in February usually, I suppose, have changed in character over the last some number of years too. When I first was on the Finance Committee, they were essentially more, here's my presentation, and Ms. Proctor would say, "Well, I think the type is too small." Another color is not so good or something. It was more stylistic. And I think under Mr. Ben Loon's tenure as moderator, he suggested that perhaps we'd spend a little bit more time at those public hearings, you know, kind of not debating it, but at least getting our points of view out about all this good public work. And I think that's proven to be pretty helpful to Town Meeting, but...
We did not have a large number of citizen petitions or warrant articles. I do expect that the students of Concord Academy may be bringing a lot of the plastic straws. Yeah. But they've already presented to us, and I'm not sure how controversial that will be, so. We are now ready, I think, to move to public comments unless...
You have to do it from us?
Okay. Anybody have public comments? Okay, we're now committee liaison. Linda, go up again.
Okay.
You got the hot seat.
I'm, since our last meeting, I met with CPC and attended their public hearing, and again, they, they received a couple of comments from the public that were helpful, but other than that, they laid out where they are at this point.
Okay.
I, I attended the HATS meeting in Lexington. The primary agenda item was to hear a presentation from the Base Commander, Colonel Wellsworth. It was very interesting. Quite a lot going on at Hanscom. They seem to be in pretty good shape over there. I also attended, at the request of Brooke Redmond, the Concord Carlisle Farm to School program at Ripley, which was very interesting, talking about just that, farm, farm to school connection with agriculture, a lot of folks were there, from the community and school committee and from the school. It was pretty interesting, a lot of really good ideas, and I suspect we'll hear a lot more from them in the future. I attended the Tax Fairness Community meeting last Friday. This is related to, Lane was here talking just about assessors, so the, for, for the assessors, this was really a very painful arithmetic exercise, and the reason for that was because every single... was because every single, every single person's issue was individualized, as opposed to other exemptions that we have, which are, if you get an exemption, you get five bucks or whatever, I don't know what the exemption is. You get, from Hugh Cargill, you get $325 a quart, it doesn't matter who you are, if you're eligible, that's what you get. But this one is depending upon your income, and, so, every single person was a different one, and as you're allocating this money, you're affecting the tax base and all of that. So it was very, very complicated. And the question that was discussed on tax fairness was whether, whether it could be simplified. For example, rather than that would be individualistic, perhaps it was just some multiple of some number. So if they're eligible, you automatically get X, if your income falls in like three categories or four, I don't know. So, the final fairness committee was raising that, because they're contemplating wanting to go to the legislature to make this permanent. You recall that sunset provision in it, Sudbury would make permit last year, and they wanted to do that, Mr., the assessor was arguing, not arguing, indicating that he thought that they should think about all potential changes they'd like to see in this legislation, and go to the legislature with a single thing, rather than just a sunset. So, that's part of what went from there. The second part of the committee is, are they still an active committee? I mean, what, what, from, from their point of view, what should they do next, if anything? Because you'll recall that when they started their activities, they had no age restriction, and they got told that that just wasn't going to fly. So they reduced the age restriction subsequent. So, the question is, they're still interested in tax relief, and so I encourage them to get their thoughts together about what they might like to try to do, and like, and then come talk to us, so we could give them some, two cents about what we thought they might try to do, and what kind of, in the group production meeting.
I went both to the finance committee and the joint school committee meetings, and basically both of them were discussing the budget and possible warrant articles, and the finance committee about sustainable budget. So, it's, the simple way of saying something, it was quite complicated, and spent quite a lot of time, but I think they were very good discussions, and we'll see kind of what comes from them. I know the, the school committee and the finance committee were working very closely on the zero-based budgeting, and I think that seemed to pay some fruition to them, that things were clearer, and they were appreciative of that, but so. I do think that one thing that's kind of, is an issue in the future, is going to be the need for the middle school, the funding for that, and that's going to throw a lot of discussions into a different gear, is the way I guess I'd put it.
Okay. I attended the planning board meeting, and I think we heard a lot of that discussion was leading up to the coordination meeting, so you know the articles that they're moving. I attended the climate action advisory committee meeting, and I think I sent you the little video clips that were recently done.
Yes, those are great, yeah.
Right, they were done by Minuteman Media Network, and they are really good. And I think you're about to be posted, if they're not already, posted on the sustainability webpage. So, I'm just looking at the accomplishments in the first, what, eight months of having a sustainability director. We have brought in a lot of money, grant monies, that allow us to do a number of things, including retrofitting the council and aging vans, let's say all hybrid.
Wow.
So, you know, we have been able to secure funding in a number of different areas for both resiliency planning and for our own climate efforts at town.
She just hit the one-year mark, last, last week.
One year, okay, one-year mark. So we've probably totaled up the amount of grant money she put in, it was way more than what we paid her in salaries. And I attended the meeting, and then you're lucky that I don't have all my notes to see. So, there you have it.
I do think, there's kind of a new excitement, Minuteman Network, I do think seems to be revving up, and it's exciting what they're doing, so.
Yeah.
I think that is good. Miscellaneous correspondence. I got emails from a concerned citizen in West Concord about the effect of the correction action on Main Street Commonwealth Ave on local businesses. It was affecting the sort of people's ability to get into park, and he was concerned that this, the local businesses were losing. I think it had to be done, and had to be done quickly, and I'm not sure if there's any way around the concern, but I appreciate that people are looking out for the businesses around.
So that was it, that's it, the split of?
Yes, yeah. Which then made it seemingly awkward to get into park at the cafe and one or the other. I think now we're there, ready for the nominations.
Okay. So nominated Susan Muladzenet, Muladzenet, then, I think that's the name of the city, a 392 border road to the West Concord Advisory Committee, Carol Wayland of 6 Abbott Lane, number six, to the Concord Center Cultural District Committee, and Dina Whitfield of 60 Center with N, to the Hugh Cargill Trust Committee. We also have committee appointments. Move to appoint Louis Barbaitia of 410 Licensing Road to the Historic Districts Commission as full member, he's the planning board nominee, for a term to expire December 31st, 2024. Theo Kidermans of 252 Fairhaven Road to the Zoning Board of Appeals as associate member, for a term to expire May 31st, 2021.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Move to adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for attending.